Due to the Corona pandemic, this meeting is held via the Zoom platform. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. If anybody has any technical or connection difficulties, please call Conrad O'Meadow at three, three, six, two, one, four, forty-five, fifteen for help. For tonight's public comments to address the commission in this meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if by phone, press star nine, and our meeting host will notify me that you wish to speak. Anyone who speaks must give their name and address for the record. I'd like to confirm that all commission members and staff members on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ryan Kirk, John Black, James Kirkpatrick.
Affirmative.
Lee Ron.
Aye.
Amber Wright. Patricia Gamble.
Aye.
Extraterritorial members. Bill Appelenapp is not here. Joan Nelson.
Here.
And Ethan Rayner. Rayner.
Aye.
Okay. Do we, we don't have five regular members here, do we? So all the alternates can stay and vote, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Staff participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mike Nun.
Here.
Conrad O'Meadow.
Present.
So, as everyone knows, this commission is appointed by elected officials and has seven regular members and two alternates. Five members make up a quorum. So this is a public meeting, and if you want to speak, you'll be given a chance. Does anyone on the commission have a conflict with any of the items on this agenda?
No.
Any conflicts? Lee?
No.
Okay, Patricia, okay.
No.
All right. So our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the meeting held on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. They were in your packet. I'm sure you had a chance to read them. That was a long meeting, but do I hear a motion to approve? We got a motion to approve.
Second.
Rowan seconds. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Our next item is a rezoning item, twenty-one dash zero, zero seventeen. Ms. Liz Ainge to present an application to rezone properties, zone the medium-density residential, high-density residential and light industrial to be high-density residential, HDR. Properties are located at Zero Plantation Drive, northwest of the intersection of Corey Drive and Plantation Drive, and thirteen nineteen thirteen Tucker Street, north of the intersection of Tucker Street and Corey Drive, and consist of Almanz County Tax Identification Number, one, two, two, five, two, two, and one, two, two, four, four, seven. So can we bring on Ms. Ainge to make her presentation?
Good evening. This is Beth Blackman. I am representing for Timmons Group tonight. Liz works with me and is actually getting married, so she, she was on vacation instead of attending this meeting. So I will cover everything. We, do you all have a map or anything to share?
Yeah, I'll get that up here for you.
Great, thank you. Um, so like I said, I'm Beth Blackman with Timmons Group. We submitted an application to rezone this property to HDR. So it is currently split zone between HDR, MDR, and light industrial. The future land use plan is a mixture of residential and business park and light industrial. But because this is sort of a transition area with you have existing single-family residents to the north and to the northeast area, the changing this to a little bit higher intensity residential use and then transition to the existing businesses on Corey Drive and Plantation Drive and over towards the outlet center area would make this a good transition area so that you're not having single-family, you know, existing single-family homes budding up to a future industrial area. And so while it's not exactly hundred percent in conformance with the land use plan, the benefits of the transition area, I think outweigh the, the, the lack of being one hundred percent compatible. The, we're looking through the comprehensive plan, you know, want to ensure that we're providing housing, you know, creating that base so that you have new, you have new commercial areas, commercial and retail, you know, requires housing to support it. Industrial and businesses require having employees, having places for people to live, so having growth. Typically, the housing growth comes earlier than the commercial and industrial growth. But, but whatever development happens here would follow the requirements in the UDO, the city standards, state standards, protecting all the natural resources, you know, stormwater mitigation, meeting all the requirements, open space requirements, et cetera. So this is just the rezoning. It's not the site plan or anything like that. But everything that comes forward will, you know, from this point on, would follow along with the UDO and the other requirements. So I am here. If you have any other questions, I know there's multiple pages of, you know, maps and exhibits for the, in the report, if y'all needed more information. Oh, I do want to say we had a neighborhood meeting in December. We had several attendees. And the meeting minutes I saw in the staff report, but I can answer any questions about that. We had a good discussion, a lot of questions. We did have someone that works for us that was able to interpret for one of the members that lives on Elder Way that attended and was a Spanish speaker. So I thought it went really well, and that was actually the first time I'd ever done that, but that was very, very helpful, and I plan on utilizing that in some of my future neighborhood meetings. So, thank you.
Mr. Parker, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Uh, we had some concerns from some residents. When this came before us last time, did we get those addressed and what were those comments? Or are we, or is that part of the public comment that's going to come later?
Can you answer that, Beth?
I can't, also I didn't know. Um, so we did some of the, I think everybody who attended the previous planning zoning commission meeting attended the neighborhood meeting, so we had a good discussion about future things that would surround. You know, we have two of these, there's two MDR yellow parcels that are kind of between Corey Drive and the site would be, will be surrounded by, you know, whatever future development this is, regardless of what type of future development is. And they have an access that is shared out to Tucker, you know, that, that crosses this property. And so that obviously brings a big concern to how they would have access to their house, and they're used to their rural setting. So we tried to, you know, explain that there would be buffers and that we could work to have, make sure there was transition areas, but it is, you know, an unfortunate kind of situation because, I mean, it could be developed now as some sort of industrial use. And we also talked about stormwater runoff, which looks to be coming from some of the sites on Corey Drive. And so one of the improvements would be they would have a better road coming in to utilize instead of their existing driveway. So we did think that situation would be made better for them. Some of the other things we talked about, you know, was traffic and that there would be a TIA required to be worked out with DOT in the city and submitted with the site plan. We talked about the floodplain that is existing on the site and the properties mostly on Elder Way side that were, you know, already kind of impacted by that on, on their existing property. But that we would control our stormwater runoff per other requirements to not make anything worse than it is now. There was also talk about, you know, just what kind of options and what would be there, what could be there. So we just talked about some of the things that would be allowed in HDR and, you know, what they could, what kinds of developments could happen. But we're welcome for any, you know, of the neighbors to speak tonight and try to address any other concerns.
According to the, some of the material you put out, these will, will be duplexes. Is that what I understand? They will be two units together as duplex?
We, we did talk about that as an option, that it could be duplexes, could be townhomes. We didn't talk, you know, we talked about one and two-story units. There wasn't a plan for actual, you know, garden-style apartments here. But this is a, a traditional conventional rezoning, so there aren't limits only zoning as it's placed before you, but there is intent by the developer not to necessarily, you know, develop garden-style apartments.
We've, we've been led to believe it's single-family homes. Is that still the case or?
Well, it could be, it would be, some of them will be attached.
Yeah.
So, but which is generally considered single-family homes, so they just happen to be attached.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission? Joan Lee, Ethan, Mr. Black?
I, I have a quick question. There's nothing binding about the intention, though. Is that correct? I mean, it could all change.
That is correct.
That's what it sounds like to me. But this is a straight rezoning. Is that, is that correct, Conrad?
That is correct.
Okay. So anything within our, our zoning packet would, would be permissible? So are there any comments, Beverly, from the public, anybody that wants to speak out to this, to this matter? Beth, go ahead. Oh, were you raising your hand?
Then I was, I was adjusting.
Okay.
No, I was muting so that if there are people from the public that wanted to speak.
Anybody, Beverly?
There is one hand raised, Conrad, in the attendees list.
Okay, Mr. Tim Spears, I'll go ahead and allow him to talk here. Bring him in as a panelist.
Mr. Spears, if you'll unmute yourself, you may address the commission or the applicant.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, I spoke with Conrad today. I just wanted to get on the record. I own the trailer dealership of the, the property that's located at eight, one, two Plantation Drive. We have several trailer dealerships around Virginia, and one of the things that we have to do on some of those is when we are backed up to a residential area, they require a large buffer zone and require us to do a lot of different things in terms of, of landscaping and fencing and things like that. So my main concern is I'm a team player here, but I have future development plans for my particular property and building a shop that's on that back property line. Conrad ensured me that I guess right now with the zoning, I have a thirty-foot buffer that's required in the current zoning. And if we switch that to HDR, that it would still be a thirty-foot buffer zone. And I just want to make sure on the record that by rezoning this, it's not going to, to interfere with my future development plans of my property by requiring me to put in excess buffer.
Mike, you want to address that?
Yes, the, the action on this probably won't impact yours. There are buffers required, and those will be done at the site plan. So the zoning, what we do between zoning districts is provide different dimensions of buffers, but nothing that's zoned tonight, should it, should it be recommended, will be, impact your property. Now, if you rezone, of course, you know, same way as this, as any rezoning, it would be under the zoning district you're, you're seeking to change to. But if you stay as you are, this has nothing, this will have no impact on that.
Okay, so I need to know.
Thank you, Mr. Spears, for joining the meeting and getting that clarified.
Thank you.
Beverly, is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Tracy Michaels is in the chat, would like to speak. Ms. Michaels, if you'll unmute yourself, you can address the commission or the applicant.
Hi, Tracy Michaels. My phone number is three, three, six, three, eight, zero, two, six, eight, three. My address is nineteen thirty-four B Tucker Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, I live here. I'm in the first house. When you turn off of Tucker Street on the dirt road, I'm the first house. I have lived here. I'm sixty years old. I've been here all my life. This is my family home. I've worked at Rollabout Scanning Center since I was fourteen. At age forty-five, I'm still employed there, so I can say, yes, I know about this neighborhood area, no doubt. I just think what they're planning with all the houses and people, I think that's too many people for the area. You've got little Almanz Creek down there, also with the sewer system and everything going on. And I'll grant you, I have been in these woods all my life as a child, motorcycles and everything, and I just don't see putting that many people on this piece of land. It's just, that's a lot of people. And I understand, they explained to me yesterday, it may possibly be townhomes in addition to duplexes, possibly two hundred and forty-four units is what I was told. I did send the list to Mark concerning some questions which he hasn't answered yet. But my, one of my biggest concerns also is the animals here. Animals had been here forever. I've got deer that had same markings. I mean, you can see the generations of animals. Nobody's even mentioned the displacement of the animals in the woods here. And personally, no, I don't want the rezoning to go for high density. They took away all the woods at the other end of Tucker Street and taking all the nature away, the woods and everything. I just, I don't like that at all. And if I did have a choice, if it is sold, I would prefer for light industrial. I've lived with a mill in my backyard all my life, and it's much better. The noise is not bad as far as the number of people, crime, nothing. And I feel with these apartments or duplexes or townhomes going up, that should going to be an awful lot of people in this neighborhood.
Beth, do you have any comments concerning Ms. Michaels? What she's addressing?
Um, everything, I mean, that all are real and valid concerns, you know, lands, nature does get impacted when we have development and growth. And it is unfortunate when you look at an area of Burlington, this, this part, property is actually like, you can pick it out because it, excuse me, it is like this area that has been left vacant for all this time. But we will, you know, we're not allowed to develop in the floodplain without appropriate permits. We will go through all the studies for connecting to the water and sewer system, you know, stormwater management. So it's unfortunate that growth does require some, you know, negative impacts as far as, you know, removing trees and redoing the site and, but providing places for people to live, you know, additional housing options, providing the, you know, a, a site where workers, you know, where employees can be, that will help encourage your growth, your commercial sites, because you have places for, you know, for them to say, oh, look, you know, there's places where people can, can live that would come to work here. So it is very unfortunate, but that is kind of the, the way it goes with, with growth and, you know, all of your open space ordinances, any tree protection ordinance, you know, everything would be followed to do the best that we can do to, to make the site as appealing as possible.
So Ms. Michaels, you, you mentioned townhomes, two hundred and some townhomes. Where did you hear that?
No, I talked to Mark on Friday, and he said they're going to include townhomes. They're thinking about including townhomes in addition to the duplex. So I don't really, still don't have a clear idea exactly what's going up.
Yeah, neither do we.
Excuse me, I, that's, it's not knowing and thinking of all, like we talk about nature and the woods and everything. And I just think it would be better, maybe they would take less woods away if it was a commercial site instead of people living here. That's just an awful lot of people living in some outer land. And I can say probably more so than anyone, I have been through these woods all my life, and it's not, I don't think it's enough room. That's a lot of people on this end of Tucker Street, a lot, right here at the highway with traffic and everything. Like I said, I work on Chapel Hill Road, so I've been in this all my life. I've been here.
Yeah.
And yes, it's kind of crowded now with the mills and everything, the traffic.
Okay.
What about schools? Are there schools to accommodate or these built for single people or older people?
Well, excuse me, um, schools generally expect development to occur and they, and I went to a lot of counties, they ask for kind of a form to be filled out to kind of figure out the growth and how often and how quickly they would need to accommodate children, depending on whether you anticipate it to be empty nesters or, you know, young families and et cetera. So as you have more growth and then those taxes would go towards, you know, schools, but the site itself is not planning to, to build, you know, in a school or anything like that.
I may be mistaken, but I'm, I'm not sure, but the two elementary schools in this area, I think it's Harvey Nuland, possibly Grove Park. I think those schools have already got a lot of children per ratio per teacher. I did, I looked at that when this first started, but I can't recall the numbers on it.
Any other comments from the commission concerning this matter? Lee?
I, I noticed in the chat that Mr. Eisenbeis has sent Ms. Michaels an email last night. Have you had a chance to look at that email, Ms. Michaels?
No, I'm not receiving an email. I have to check the spam or junk folder.
I'll be curious to say what he, hear what he had to say.
If I can find it quickly.
I was just going to say, at this stage, Mark, Mr. Eisenbusch has, you know, he's been bouncing around different ideas, and so that's why there's been different versions of sketches. But none of these are, you know, a, a done deal and, you know, none of them presented to, to staff as, as this is what, you know, the plan is. It's more of just talking about different ideas and trying to come up with what would be the best use for the site. So that would just to explain why there's been different numbers and different types of units.
I am sorry, I did not find the email. He, if he can hear me, would like, would like him to send it again, please, because it's not in my spam or junk folder.
But, Ms. Blackman, you, you can say that this is going to be a residential development, whether it's medium or high density, correct? It is going to be resident, huh?
Correct, yes.
You can say that, correct?
I can say that, yes.
Okay, okay.
I do believe HDR technically allows some institutional uses, but the intent is to develop it as residential.
Okay.
But there are certain uses that are allowed and honestly about every zoning district, when you think about like fire stations and stuff like that, so. But develop it as residential.
Right, but understood, but you know, when, when we're sitting here looking at this, it kind of, it kind of helps if we know what the intent is, so thank you.
The intent is residential. And the, the thought for the high-density residential is just to provide some flexibility of uses because that just gives you that option to throw in the, the duplexes, the quadplexes and stuff like that, just things that are a little bit different. And with the floodplain on site, there is, you know, some amount of unusable area, so you've got to use the area that you have available.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know, I've, I've got one real quick. Do you, do you know what the percentage of floodplain is?
I can probably tell you in a minute or two, if you want to ask another question.
I'm curious as to who's the target audience is for buyers. Since it's right off of I forty, do you see this as a bedroom community for the triangle? Or will there be parks and things there for the people who live there?
So there is open space required, you know, and a portion of that has to be active. So the intent would be to have, you know, pocket parks and areas on the site. The, I'm trying to find the floodplain area information at the same time. Um, as far as the targeted buyer, that's, I mean, I don't know of a specific person that they're aiming for. I would imagine that in any community, you would have a mixture of people, just, you know, people who might would want to live nearby their jobs and then people who are willing to commute a little further to be able to live in a, you know, some people don't want to live in Raleigh, so they'd really live in a smaller neighborhood. In a smaller area. And Mark said, apologize, my dogs are going to bark. About ten acres of the forty-one acres is floodplain.
About twenty-five percent is unusable for residents.
Correct. Well, it'll be usable from a, a natural open space perspective, but unusable from a development perspective.
Do you have a price that you're considering for the duplexes of the townhomes?
No, it would be market rate, and so that would depend on the market, honestly, at the time. At this stage in the game, the rezoning is so early, so we still have to go through a site plan and a construction drawing and get all of our permits before housing construction would even start, so it's hard to estimate in a year or two, you know, kind of what prices would be and what you'd be looking at then. But it would be, what would be considered market rate, so it's not, you know, affordable housing, it's just whatever the market rate happens to bear.
So Beth, are, is the Timmons Group, is, is that a, a developer or?
Is you prefer.
No, we are a all-purpose civil engineering firm. We do engineering and design. We have support services like surveying, geotech, environmental. And so we help developers, builders and et cetera develop. I work primarily, I work only in residential, but we have other groups that do commercial and such. So we tend to represent applicants, you know, as at rezonings, and then we move on to the preliminary plats and the At rezonings and then we move on to the preliminary flats and the CDs as well.
Well, a lot of times, um, we had planned and zoned and get a little burnt. Because, uh, someone like you will come to us wanting a rezoning. And as soon as we rezone it, about six months or a year later, there's a for sale sign up there. That this developer re- really didn't have any intention of doing anything. All they wanted to do was to get us to rezone it, so they could put it on the market for someone else. To, uh, come in with their plan, so saying you're going to have duplexes or townhomes and all that. It just seems to be, uh, so preliminary that. You know, if we we if we go ahead and rezone this for you, then I sure hope we don't see a for sale sign up there in six or eight months. If somebody else wants to, um, buy the property and come in with a whole new idea. Without presenting anything to us, because it's already rezoned. So.
Well, it it would not necessarily have to go back to you, but any any plan that anybody would present will have to go through staff. And get their approval and then on to, uh, you know, you have to get permits from DOT and the state and various other people as well, so. There is a whole process.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I I do, I I do think we need to keep in mind this is a transition piece between an industrial area and a residential area. And as staff has recommended, um, although it's 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 not quite perfect. Um, it's a great transition piece under the current zoning that they are applying for. And that's what we're here for is the zoning. Uh, and in my personal opinion, it's a great transition piece, uh, to get that done. To make that work.
Yeah, I I agree with you, James, and I'm not not arguing the point. I just, I just, uh. Hope that it doesn't go back up for resale once it gets rezoned, but this, you know, this contractor, this guy who wants to do this project will go out and do it, you know?
I wish we, I wish we could control that, but we can't.
Go ahead, Mr. Ron.
Uh, I I read on the application that the owner is Copeland Fabrics. It'd be interesting to have something, uh, someone from Copeland. Address that.
Well.
They're not here.
They had to sign an application, but, um, that just is, uh, to. Uh, I will say rarely do we have property owners at these meetings.
I understand that.
Are there any other comments from the commission? Conrad or Mike, do y'all have a recommendation?
Yes, staff is recommending approval option one, shown bold and red. I'm sorry, option two. I'm sorry, option two. Approve, recommending approval, albeit inconsistent with the with the future land use map, just because of all the difference, while the color we got in there. But we are recommending approval.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Patrick.
Sure.
Oh, Mr. Black?
Yes. I I'm sorry, I've had a lot of trouble getting on, but, and I. Just kind of curious, going back to the gentleman that has the the trailer function. Uh, over there, and I can't remember his name, um.
Tim Spears.
Thank you, Spears. Okay, we're, I mean, the obvious thing is, as, um, James pointed out. This is a strict rezoning that we really don't need to, uh, know what's going in. As long as it meets the guidelines of of what can be put there. I'm a little cautious because we find out that twenty-five percent of the land can't be used for building. It can be used as all space due to the fact it's in a flood zone. So now they're asking for high density instead of medium density. And I would think with less land to be used, medium density is probably better. But I'll only want to go back to the gentleman that has the business. He said he has some plans in the future. And I want to make sure that I understand or he understands, uh, whatever his plans are. That it's zoned for his future plans, so that he doesn't have to go back. To ask for a rezoning, which now may complicate his situation. And this may have already been discussed between him and the city. But, uh, and I didn't quite understood. I thought he said a garage or something, but I'm not sure. Uh, if he said exactly what his plans were for the back of his land. But I want to make sure that he understands or we're in agreement that whatever his plans are. Will be such that he doesn't have to come for rezoning, otherwise he may find himself in a different situation. And I don't know if that was addressed while I was an owner or not.
Yes, Mr. Black, he he was asking about buffers and zoning on his property.
He said he had plans, but what does the plans that he have, will they cause him to be rezoned?
He he mentioned a garage, but but basically the answer is this, if he if he is not wanting to change the use on his site. He if he does not want a rezoning, he's not going to have to to do to have to do any of that.
I understand, but as I understand now, he's in sales. All all he does is sell off of that land. If he's going to put it in a garage, it may change his use and he may have to request rezoning. I don't know if he's aware of that. I didn't know if he was.
He already has a garage there. He already has a garage there.
Yeah. Yeah, I advised him, yeah, I advised him, if he did, if he's not looking to make a change of you, this, the uses that he has there, if he's not looking to change his zoning district. He won't be impacted.
All right, as long as he's aware of that. Uh, because I don't want him to come back, um, you know, a year or two from now and say, you told me. And then he said, well, you didn't tell us you were going to do this, so I just want to make sure he understood that.
Yeah, if he was, I explained to him, if he were to come in here with a a a a different use than he has now, then he would be just like this, uh, any applicant. He would have to come and request a rezoning, but if he was going to continue with the uses he's doing now, then this, he won't be affected.
As long as he understands, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Spears is, uh, on the on the call. Go ahead, Mr. Spears, to address John Black.
Y- yes, I I wouldn't be changing anything that I'm doing now. We currently do sales and repair trailers. And the only thing I wish to do is, uh, future plans would be to put in a nicer facility there, nicer storefront. Um, that would, instead of, um, having the the property, the the buildings that I have now, I would replace those. And uh, the best fit for me would be to back that building up to, you know, thirty feet off that back line. And I'm a team player here. I don't have any reservations about what y'all guys are trying to do. I just wanted to make sure it didn't change my future plans and I'm satisfied with the answer that I received.
Spears, that was, my concern was to make sure you understood if you made changes that. Might, uh, you know, not doing what you're doing right now. I just wanted you to be sure that you were protected. If you're happy, I'm happy.
I I'm I'm happy.
Good deal.
Thank you, Mr. Spears.
Thank you.
Excuse me, this is, uh, Mark Eisenbeis, the developer. Tim, I will be reaching out to you because one thing I want to make sure that, uh. That happens is that we inform our residents what, uh, your your future plans are. Because, uh, it it sounds like you're you're going to, uh. Develop or add to your site under the existing zoning. And I want to make sure that our residents know your intentions and that, uh, you're able to do so. And that they're not calling you, uh, with any complaint. So we we want, we want to educate our our residents, uh, as as soon as possible.
Absolutely. We we wouldn't be doing anything than we're doing now. And our hours of operation are eight to five Monday through Friday and and Saturday from, uh, nine to one. And, uh, we wouldn't be a factor for any of your residents in there. Like I said, I'm a team player before. I just didn't want them to come back. If we rezone this and put in some crazy buffer laws on me that would affect on how I could build my building that I I I hope to do in the future, so.
That's the the, I appreciate that, and if and if we need to adjust any of our buffers to accommodate you, we're we're happy to, uh. To talk with you about that, too.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Kirkpatrick a question. Um, you said you thought this was the perfect transitional zoning. Do you think there's no other level of zoning? That would be a transition? Why this one?
I I I didn't say that. I said, I think this is a fine, a great transition. Uh, just typically between going between an industrial area and a residential area. And my step grandmother grew up on Hillendale, or she was, her house was on Hillendale, uh, so I'm very familiar with the area. Uh, and moving from a light industrial to a residential area, a medium density or high density is oftentimes a great, uh, tool. Or avenue to make that transition.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I make a motion to recommend approval of request to rezone properties, uh, zone medium density residential MDR. High density residential HDR and light industrial to the high density residential HDR. The properties in question are located at zero Plantation Drive Northwest at the intersection of Quarry Drive and Plantation Drive in nineteen thirty Tucker Street. North from the intersection of Tucker Street and Quarry Drive, and consist of Alamance County tax identification numbers one, two, two, five, two, two, and one, two, four, four, seven. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan. In that it calls for this area to have residential and industrial uses. The request is compatible with existing residential, commercial and industrial areas and, uh, indus- industrial uses in the area. This action is reasonable and the public interest in that the comprehensive plan encourages residential uses to supplement existing commercial and industrial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Ron, second. So for the vote, uh, please raise your hand, uh, so we can count the hands. All in favor of this, uh, motion, please raise your hand, say an aye, aye?
Aye, no.
Anybody opposed? One opposed. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Mark, for being here. Thank you, Beth, for explaining everything. And we'll move on. We'll, we'll move on to our next, uh, item of business, item number. Two. All right, this Maria Saverian. Wait a minute, here we go, sorry. To present an application to rezone a property zoned medium density residential MDR to general business GB. This property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Alamance Road and Bonnie Lane. At twenty-eight thirteen Alamance Road and consists of Alamance County tax identification number. One, two, zero, four, seven, nine. Ms. Sari- Saribian.
Chair Parker, I'm trying to bring Ms. Sabrian into the chat here. Give me one second.
Okay. There she is. So Maria, if you'll, um, uh, you've unmuted, that's good. So if you'll go ahead and present your, um, petition to the commission, now's the time.
Good evening. Can someone, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. I guess, uh, we just recently bought this property here on the Bonnie Lane. And, uh, Alamance Road and we, right now is considered, um. Moderate density residential, which I would like to see if we can, um. Convert it with, uh, in estate in conforming use with the future land use, which is, uh, commercial. So, um, I am a real estate agent. I own a business as well. And, uh, we really wanted to see if we can do it like a light industrial, but I bet, I guess it's not going to work. So, uh, I just want to see if I can devote for, uh, go for commercial. In estate and conforming with the land use. I don't know if that's possible.
All right. Are there any questions from the commission concerning this matter? Maria, have you had a neighborhood meeting concerning this?
No, I have not. Oh. The only person I have is, uh, like a hundred feet away from me. And, you know, uh, I was telling Dave what my purpose was. And well, at least the the closest neighbor that I have, he didn't say anything to me about it. So he's a, he became really friendly. But I haven't heard, I mean, I I haven't had any comments or things of that nature.
Any calls or anything, uh, Mike or Conrad?
Not at all, no at all.
So, no, no, no pub- no public comments, Mike?
Not that we received today, no.
Yeah, you you do have it posted, right?
Yes, with signs, we send the letters out.
Okay.
Three hundred feet, we post it, yes, sir. And I have it, yes. Yeah, there's not much around us. She stayed. There's not, there's others around, but not as many as you would normally think in a neighborhood or in a residential setting.
There's there, there's not many around at all.
Yeah, I only have one neighbor.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we, we, we do have to send it out.
We do, yes.
Uh, three hundred foot radius or something, right?
We do, yes, sir. Three, we don't have to, but we do as a courtesy.
Okay.
Yes.
So others would have gotten the letter, too.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's posted with a sign as well.
And there are no comments from the commission? Is that what I'm hearing? Mr. Black, anybody? Well. There's no comments, yes, go ahead.
It looks to me like, uh, general business is moving that direction. Out of Alamance Road, so it makes sense to me to, uh, pass this.
Yep. Any other comments? Okay. Nothing from the public. All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Ron.
Make sure I'm on the right page with item four. Uh, staff recommends option one to approve. I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone a property zoned medium density residential. To general business GB. The property is located at southwest corner of the intersection of Alamance Road. And Bonnie Lane at two, eight, one, three Alamance Road and consists of Alamance County tax ID number. One, two, zero, four, seven, nine. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that. The future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have residential and commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential, commercial and industrial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential, commercial and industrial. Uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Second.
Got a second for Mr. Kirkpatrick. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. No opposed. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Maria, for coming and making your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next stop, next stop is City Council. All right. All right, now let's get to our next item. And that's going to be presented by Mr. Todd Lambert on behalf of the City of Burlington. To to present an application to rezone a property that's zoned medium density residential to conditional residential. In order to expand the existing North Long Cemetery. Property is located southeast from the intersection of Ross Street and Lower Hope Dale Road, and consists of Alamance County tax identification number one, four, zero, six, six, four. Mr. Lambert. Make your presentation, please.
Hey, good evening, members of the board and chair. This position is brought to you on behalf of the city. This is adjacent to the existing North Lawn Cemetery. The property was purchased by the city going in February of nineteen ninety-six when it became available under the, the purpose then of always knowing or wanting to be able to expand the North Lawn Cemetery as the city grew. Currently, the city has three active cemeteries. North Lawn being the, the most viable one for expansion. Pine Hill is confined with, with very limited spaces available. Rest Haven, which is south of here on sixty-two, has been sold out years ago. And right now, our cemetery and grounds looks at probably being full of the existing area of North Lawn in the next year to two years. So progression into this space is the natural progression that the city had planned for. And we're currently asking for it to be rezoned to be in compliance with the U D O to allow for that expansion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do you know how many plots this would accommodate?
We don't at this time. And Conrad, if you, if you'll let me share my screen, I can kind of just show the area in general here.
Go ahead, Todd.
Let me know when that comes up for everybody. Okay, good. Can you see that now?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, the, the existing cemetery comprises these two tracts and parcels here. Comprising those, the proposed lot for expansion is there. We're working with cemetery and grounds to kind of evaluate the site and how it could be configured. Most likely, the configuration will look something very similar to the current sections of the North Lawn Cemetery. As you can see, this area in red, which is why the existing North Lawn Cemetery has not been expanded to the east. That area has, has a very distinct draw with some stream buffers and other topographical restraints that just make that area not suitable for a cemetery. So realistically speaking, it would look something like the current configuration, but just continuing on up into this region to the north. But as far as an actual number and total layout, we, we haven't got that far yet. So right now, just first step is requesting the zoning to allow that. And this zoning would comply with all the requirements of the U D O for the specific use requirements as specified for a cemetery.
Okay, but, so the city owns the red portion as well as the green.
That, that's well, that, these tax parcels, as you see here, are owned completely by the city. It's just that red portion based on topography and a, a stream that's there with buffers and the severe slope and the grade just doesn't lend that portion to be used as a cemetery.
Okay. You got it. Are there any other questions from the commission members?
I have a question. There was a public comment from Mr. Blount, who lives on, I think it's Christopher Street, about buffer zone. I mean, I don't know if it was answered, and I'm wondering if Mr. Thompson can tell us. He wanted to know if it was, the boundary can be twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet. I don't know if that was what he wanted or it's just a question.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know he had expressed the question about what the buffers were. So the buffers are set forth in the U D O for cemeteries. They include a landscape buffer, which would be this area here on the northern side of the property that would be required. And there's, there's kind of, for cemeteries, there's, there's a little bit of two different buffers that you have there. So you have your dedicated perimeter landscape buffer, but then you also have a twenty-five foot buffer that's required by the U D O from any burial plots being within twenty-five feet of the property line. So you would actually have a twenty-five foot buffer for any burial plots. But then you would also have a landscape buffer that would be included as part of that twenty-five foot grave buffer, so to speak.
Mr. Lambert, can you put your pointer on the lot that this man owns? His house on Christopher?
Let me see if I can find the right one. I think it's this one here. So if you see where it's, where it's coming up now. And I'll, I'll, I'll move that just so you can see it, but it's, it's this house here that shows his address.
Well, how?
So he's on.
Right, so he's on the other side of the street. But again, we, we would have the buffers offset from the property line. And keeping in mind that most of the, most of the property line is going to be in, in what's really a non-developable area. So that would stay as it does now.
Yeah. So he's not anywhere close to the cemetery? Is that right?
Well, I guess that's all a matter of opinion, but yes, he is across the street from Christopher Drive, yes.
Okay, all right. That's good. Thank you. Did you have a neighborhood meeting?
We did not for this property.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public, Beverly?
I do not see any participants right now with any raised hands or tendees.
Okay.
Actually, we have one raised hand in the audience. Yes.
Okay.
Conrad, we'll let them in.
Okay, is this Gabrielle? Are you here?
Hi, I don't know if you can see us, but as long as you can hear us, I guess that's fine.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead. Give us your name and address, please.
So my name is Yelson Gonzalez, but I'm just speaking for Gabriel Gonzalez. He's my father, and he lives on two forty-one Christopher Drive. That is a property near that, the zoning area that you guys want to do. It's in the red zone, but either way. I guess the main concern is, or question is, how would expanding or rezoning that area to affect the property value of the houses that are, that would be affected in some way?
Again, from the, from the city's perspective, and, and again, I'm, I'm not a real estate agent, so I'm not offering an appraisal or anything of that nature. But we, we do not see of any of our cemeteries, both municipal owned or the other cemeteries that are in town, a, a negative effect on property values. The most recently that I would point to is the Alamance Memorial Park on U S seventy. But with, with almost little to no buffers to their western border, Ashley Woods built right up to the edge of the cemetery and have houses within ten feet of their property line. And it certainly did not hurt that developer's perspective on him choosing to develop and selling all those homes rather quickly. So again, based on the developments around our other cemeteries, I, I don't see that that would be an issue for a property value standpoint. Also, being a city cemetery, I think our grounds crew is, takes, takes great pride in, in keeping our cemeteries very nice, very manicured, and are very proud of the way they look. So it's certainly an attractive feature from, from an aesthetic standpoint.
Okay.
Okay. That was mainly the, the, that was the biggest concern, just having a cemetery, like, being close, and then now even closer. It's kind, it was, I mean, it's kind of weird, but, I mean.
That's, that's a great question, but it's also one of the hardest questions to answer in that the property value, the property value is whatever it is at the time you decide to sell it. I, I, I would love to be able to answer that question, but I, I don't know that anybody on this committee is capable of doing so. Sorry.
Yeah.
But they, they do keep them neat, I will say that. They do a fantastic job.
Yeah, they do. That's fine. All right. That's cool. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Thank you for your comments. You got anything else for us, Beverly? Anybody else out there?
I do not see any more comments.
Sorry, Chair Parker, there is one comment, a question and answer. Will someone, Teresa is asking if she will be able to see the cemetery from their backyard. Teresa, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk to address the commission.
Teresa, give us your name. Teresa, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Teresa Austin. I live at two thirty-seven Christopher Drive.
Okay, can you spot that for us, Todd?
Yes. So you see the two Chris, two, two thirty-seven Christopher Drive there?
Yeah.
So again, with, without a plan at this point in time, the only thing that I can, that I can definitively say is that area is in, based on topography, not backing up to where we see development happening, and that's coming from a financial standpoint. Because it just is not cost effective to do the amount of work to prepare any, any area in that red to, to make it feasible to use. So that area in red is kind of a, a no man's land for us. So that's going to stay natural as it is now. I, I could not see between the buffer of her deep backyard, plus being against the undeveloped area of the cemetery, that her view would change any from her backyard or for her residence.
So I should be okay where I am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I don't want to sit out on my deck and see the cemetery.
No, no, ma'am, I think you'll be fine there. And I'll also say too, that this is a very long-term project. This cemetery opened to the city in nineteen sixty-four, so it's, it's taken that many years to get this far. It, this would certainly a, a full expansion of this whole area. Talking with cemetery and grounds is probably a, a ten-year project. This is just step one in, in getting that process moving.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Teresa. Anything else you want to say?
I know. I think that'll do it.
All right, well, thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. Are there any other comments from the commission?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Black, I apologize.
That's quite all right. Mr. Lambert, how dense is that foliage that we see there in that twenty-five foot buffer? Are these tall trees? It's hard for me to tell from this angle.
Are you talking about existing or what would be?
What would be left? I mean, obviously, the red, I can, I can obviously see anybody that's backed up into the red wouldn't see anything. But the, the twenty, this is, is this pretty tall and thick foliage here?
It is now.
And again, I mean, with a twenty-five foot buffer of that is, that's kind of limit sight there, isn't it?
It, it will. Now, I, I would, I, I would say when we get to the point of developing on that northern property line, which is going to be the last phase for sure. We, we would work with the cemetery and grounds people to evaluate the actual condition of the trees that are there. We certainly want to leave them if they're healthy and in good shape. If, if they're not at that point in time, then our cemetery and grounds would, would trim selectively of any of the trees that were, were at a risk and then replant those under the terms of the U D O. But, but yes, the intent would be to keep it along that northern buffer as, as much as possible, the way it appears now.
So with the twenty-five foot and then another five, you said, is that like a thirty-foot line?
No, th- those overlap.
Oh, okay. So twenty-five foot would be the, the buffer?
Yes, twenty-five foot would be where the graves can be. The actual buffer would be required to be a ten-foot minimum, but based on the fact that we can't have graves within twenty-five feet, effectively, you're going to get a twenty-five foot buffer.
I'm sorry, how far?
Effectively, you'll end up with a twenty-five foot buffer.
Okay, like I said, these are, these are pretty established tree line and all that, so.
Yeah.
That'd be good. Okay, thank you. And, and one other thing.
Yes.
Letters were sent to these people within three hundred foot, so I guess everybody was aware of it. So the, the only comments we got were those who were concerned. I'm good. Yeah.
Thank you.
And does everybody in that area, they're on city water? They don't have wells or anything like that?
No, ma'am, we have city water. I can quickly just turn those on so you can kind of get an overview of, of what's in the area. I say quickly, but you'll have to give them a, a chance to load up and turn on here.
There's no house.
Yeah, so, so the light blue lines you see are city water, and the green lines you see are city sewer.
Sewers, yeah.
All of, all of the homes in that area are serviced on public water and sewer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, before we get, get the motion, let's get a recommendation from staff. Conrad?
Yeah, Chairman Parker and the commission staff is recommending option one in bold. Consistent with the comp plan and recommending approval.
All right. Mr. Kirkpatrick?
I make a motion to recommend approval of the request for his own, the property's own medium density residential M D R to this the residential C R. The property is located in the southeast, is located southeast from the intersection of Ross Street and Lower Hope Dale Drive and consists of Alamance County tax identification number one, zero, four, six, six, four. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use, land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for the area to be, to have residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. The action is reasonable in the, in the public interest. The action, this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential compatible uses in the area. The request is complimentary with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
I'll second.
Ethan seconds. All in favor, please raise your hand. Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. All right, the motion passes, Conrad. So on to city council, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I think we have one last item that we postponed. Let me see if I can find it here.
City staff.
To present findings from an inquiry posed, posed to other North Carolinian jurisdictions regarding public notification mailing radius distances. Mr. Nun, do you want to take this one to?
Oh, and, oh, intro, I don't want to take Conrad's thunder. He did a lot of research and work with our other municipalities in North Carolina. As, as planners, we have a list serve. I'm sure most of you have either friends or professionals serves your own and got a lot of information back from them. We found a few different things. But one thing to keep in mind is, kind of, I'll remind you is council has by general statute a, a three hundred foot noticing requirement. We, you, as P and Z, do, we do it as a courtesy at the P and Z level, which I think is appropriate to notify the public, of course. And we follow city councils standard that they're at feet. So the same folks get notified at the council level and council meets the general, the North Carolina general statutes. So that's why we are where we are today, basically. We're just, we're just mirroring what the city council is required to do. We're not required to do it, but we do it as a courtesy. And again, I think that's the right thing to do. So Conrad can share with you what we found. Like I said, a few are, are different, but most of them are, are sticking with that, that general statute three hundred feet because their elected boards, their policy boards have the same standards and, and not confusing the public. But I'll let him talk and, and share what he found.
Great. Thank you, Mike, Chairman Parker, members of the commission. This is a presentation on the mailed public notice. This is a presentation on the mailed public noticing radius distances. So, I'll be, I'll be brief, I've got about ten slides to run through, I'm happy to take any questions at the end. This is a follow-up to the August twenty-third planning and zoning commission meeting from last year. Specific to inquire about the fourteen hundred twenty-foot mailing radius. And to ask other departments in the state as far as what do they require also, and what do they do for their best practices? As a matter of state statutes, which is what we rely on for the, the base, if you will. We, we do, this would be for the public hearing, and the public hearing is what city council hears. So, for the items that y'all heard tonight, that will be going, be mailed again via a public hearing when it goes to city council, and there's ten days, no, no less than ten days, and no more than twenty-five days from the date of that, of that hearing. To be consistent with city councils' public hearings, we apply the same day, days for your, for your meetings, for the planning and zoning commission meeting. The other requirement of the state is to just notify properties that are abutting. So it's basically your next door neighbors, so folks that are two or three homes down the road, they may not necessarily be noticed. And if we were just to follow the state guidelines, which y'all know, we, we go above and beyond that. So we are currently implementing a three hundred foot radius, this is consistent with our city council public hearings, and y'all are, what we would have here are called public meetings for the commission. So we're exceeding the minimum state requirements for the statutes. Checked in with some of our local neighbors, Elon, Graham, and Bevan. As Mike mentioned, we also put out a email to the listserv, and we got about seventeen responses from cities and counties. Keep in mind, some of them are urban, some of them are, are rural. But when we look at the, just doing some simple average math, it looks like four hundred foot radius distance is what most folks in the, in the state are doing for planning and zoning commissions. For city councils, about four hundred and twenty-one foot radius. They all are consistent, what they do for their city councils, what they do for their planning and zoning commission. And some, some cities say we just default to what the state requires, we just notify the abutting properties. Here's a quick map showing you all the state, all the cities and some of the counties that responded, just so you get an idea of the, how much fun it is to send us an inquiry to the planning listserv, we look at all the planners in the state of North Carolina responding, sometimes out of state. But here are the folks that gave, that came back to us. And here's a table that shows where, where Burlington is in, in the makeup here. As you can see, we're not noticing the most, and we're not noticing the least, we're, we're in that ballpark figure of just a hundred foot shy of what the average is. But as you can see, similar to other cities like Mebbans, Wilmington, and also Apex in North Carolina. All these are in North Carolina, obviously, so. Staff also looked, it happened to be coincidentally, we, we got the UNC School of Government, some of y'all have done the training, they occasionally put out some blog posts. And there happened to be a, a blog post that came, that came out during the time that staff was doing its research. And it pretty much aligns with what we were, what we're doing and what I just discussed with you, so. Here's an example of our buffer maps, and happy to take any questions, and just to point out to you, this, the way, the way we, we do this analysis, we send the parcel identification number to our G I S department, and they give us a list of all the property owners within that, that buffer radius. So this is an example of, of that very same map that we get. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
On the very first page, there was something, one thousand four hundred and twenty feet, what was, what was that on the first page, your first slide?
Sure, let me, let me go ahead and hop back there, that first slide, I believe that was a that was a radius distance that was mentioned by the commission.
What?
It was quarter mile.
Quarter mile, you know, when it first came out.
Do we, do we, do we ask about that, I don't remember that.
That was in some of the discussion.
Was that Mr. Black?
I believe I, I mentioned a quarter of a mile as a point of reference.
Okay. I, I just didn't, I didn't remember that quarter mile thing, but.
No, that was, that was sort of the, as far, you know.
Yeah. I got you. I understand. So we're, we're just pretty much average in the middle kind of notice people, right?
We're a little below average.
Yeah.
I mean, we're actually at the low end, right? There's only three hun, there's only two cities, three cities below, Roxboro, Carteret County, and how do you pronounce it, Albemarle? Everybody up.
Albemarle.
And three hundred, and then everybody's higher.
So, I'll, I'll point out that Roseboro doesn't do, when there's a dash, that means that they do not do noticing for their planning and zoning commission. So Cary and Chatham County and Roseboro do not do public noticing for their commission. They do notice it for the city council, because state statutes require noticing for the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Ryan, did you have a question?
Yeah, if you knock off Albemarle and Rockingham County, those two extremes, the average comes up to about three, three sixty-six point six seven. So, we're, we're real close.
And, and what I didn't include in this PowerPoint, because this was so specific on the radiuses, is that we are, we are posting properties. We are doing, including, we're posting it on our website as well, so. Those are some additional steps that we are doing for the public. So they're aware, and if they're interested, they can participate in the meetings, and I'm hoping y'all have seen a, a change in that of, of interest and property owners from abutting prop, or from, from properties that we're capturing in that, in our, in that radius.
Well, we.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
John Black, yeah, I, I think my biggest concern, one, first, is, is this something that we could pass on to a developer? To require them to give notification and take it off of the city? If not, then another thing that I, I look at this is that when we talk about distance, I think we're, we're on a kind of a linear thought process. You know, eye view, but a three-story building might throw a shadow. Once again, we're not a quarter mile, but much further than a hundred feet or three hundred feet. And I think that that's something that we don't take in consideration, that, yeah, abutting might be one thing, but would you want, you yourself want a building three hundred foot or three hundred and fifty foot away, three stories between you and the sun, or something like that? Would that be of a concern to you? If it was flat and level, probably wouldn't, and that's one of the things that I concern myself with, is that people who might be affected by a three, four-story building or something like that, who would not be receiving a three hundred foot memo. And so I'm, I'm just looking to kind of make it easier that people understand what's going on. Our job is to listen to that and, and deal with it, but I, I think just letting people know upfront as far as we can, saves us more headaches down the road. But I yield to the rest of the commission.
Mr. Parker, when John Black first brought this up, I thought it was.
You could say.
No, I thought it was ridiculous, but you know what? After thinking about it and, and kind of looking at it and the various things that we've seen, he's one hundred percent correct, in my opinion. So he's, he's won me over, because it, it, it's about the public. And it's about how it affects them, and he's one hundred percent correct. And I used to didn't think that.
I also think it doesn't just affect a house, it affects a neighborhood. You know, it's a collection of people that make up the neighborhood and not just individual houses that are on the edge.
So in, in that regard, Mr. Kirkpatrick, do you think we need to expand our radius?
I would support it one hundred percent.
And what would you expand it to? What would you, your suggestion be?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay. You got any discussion on that, Ethan, Lee? Patricia, Joan?
I, I think four hundred would be fair, I think we're, we're below the average. I know there's that one thousand in there that pumps it up, and I think three hundred's the low end.
Yeah, we, we'd only be a third above the average if we drop out Albemarle and Wilmington by going four hundred, if it's three sixty-six point six 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 seven. Is what the numeric average without that thousand, without the one hundred, so. Four hundred's good.
What, what do you say, Ethan?
Sounds fair to me.
Patricia? Where'd she go? Oh, there she is, she raised her hand.
Okay, sorry, fair.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't look at this as inhibiting growth or inhibiting development or anything like that, it's, it's awareness, like Mr. Black has said. It's awareness to the neighbors, and at the end of the day, they've been there. They, they, they should have that right, and Mr. Black, you turn to me, so, congratulations.
Alright, let me ask the city staff, Conrad and Mike, especially Conrad. How much trouble would it be to extend it to four hundred with, with this recommendation? As hours of work, or just a little bit?
Conrad, do you want me to take it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike. Whoever, whoever wants to tell.
Yeah, I don't want to put him on the spot so much, we, we can extend your notification that, as a board. But just a key point I want you to keep in mind, mind, or suggestion to you, if you want to do that, to make it all work together, if we could send a recommendation to council.
Yeah.
And ask them to extend theirs to four hundred, because if you do four hundred, the policy, the decision-making board is only going to do three, and you may miss eight, you may have confusion with the public going, well, I got one for your P and Z, because I was in the four hundred range, but when you moved to council, you got me at three, and I'm out of that, so. If we could work to avoid that, I think it, from what I hear, it meets your objectives. So it might be best to, like, send a recommendation up for council to consider expanding theirs to four hundred before.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, that's what I would suggest to you. Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that, Richard?
Well, let's, let's give another comment from Lee here, go ahead, Lee.
What's the additional cost?
Well, it'll be, it'll be like, like Conrad said, we ask our G I S division to do the measurement, it, it, it could be, you know, each time as we start a night, you have one that had very few homes around it, even if you extended a hundred more feet. Others may have a hundred more homes in it. So there will be a cost, and there will be time involved. You know, I, I, on a scale, a hundred more feet versus, you know, if you asked us to go, you know, to eight hundred feet, that would be, that would be a lot of cost.
Well, do we, do we have to ask the city council for additional budget for P and Z?
I think they'll take that into consideration, I think that's one thing I would suggest, you make a recommendation to them, and let it go through the normal process of making a recommendation from a board, and let them.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, I was planning to ask it, or if we needed a motion, it needed to go to city council first.
Yeah. I, I was going to insist on that, so.
Thank you.
Do.
Mr. Black, since it was your idea, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, mate, let's get a motion, Mr. Black, to recommendation, or to recommend to city council that we extend our public notice requirement to four hundred feet from three.
Start move. Second.
Alright, well, Mr. Black made a motion to extend it, recommend that we extend it four hundred feet to city council. It's been seconded, so all in favor, say aye with a raise a hand. Alright. Any opposed, same sign, alright, so, let's write it up, Beverly or whoever's doing this to make a recommendation to city council, and Conrad, we'll let you do your little slideshow and take it to them and, and tell them that we recommend it.
And, and thank you, thank you Conrad for that information, that, that was, that was valuable.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you, you're welcome.
Alright, is there any other business to come before the commission tonight?
Motion.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Already did it.
All in favors. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, good night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye Beverly.